Okay, I think we're ready to start the meeting. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, September 11th, 2018. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua. Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Sergeant. Not present.
Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you all for joining us, and as always, we'll start out with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President, Marquess, members of the board. It's been exciting times in Boulder Valley. I've been extremely busy doing the best that I can to get out into our schools and to be where the action's happening with teachers and our leaders and support staff. I was able to visit 10 schools over the past week, which brings my total up to 34 school visits, and so I've certainly been busy and have been just really, really enjoyable. To give the board and the public a bit of a deeper update on my progress on the 100-day plan, we have 100% of our school visits that are scheduled. I've also scheduled something that we're referring to as superintendent learning sessions, where we're actually tapping into the expertise of our staff here at the central office, and they are sitting down with me and teaching me all about the great things in this district. They actually develop a lesson plan, try to follow best teaching practices and adult learning principles, and so a few of our staff have even given me tests after to make sure I was paying attention, and luckily, I haven't failed any yet, so doing pretty well there. We also, over the past couple of weeks, were able to schedule our superintendent parent community meet and greets. We have nine of those set up that'll be spread out throughout October and the beginning of November throughout the community. We picked our big high schools as focal points because we feel like those are really centers of the different various communities that we serve. So I'll run through those real quick, if that's okay. We'll be on October 1st at 7:00 p.m., I'll be at Boulder High School. October 10th at 6:00 p.m., Centaurus High School. October 22nd at 6:00 p.m., I'll be at Nederland Middle Senior High School. October 24th at 6:00 p.m., I'll be at Broomfield High. October 25th at 6:00 p.m., I'll be Southern Hills Middle School. At Southern Hills Middle School, on November 1st at 6:00 p.m. at Monarch High School. And then we'll have three of our sessions that will be in Spanish. In Broomfield, at Emerald Elementary School on October 29th at 6:00 p.m. In Boulder, at Columbine Elementary on November 5th at 7:00 p.m. And in Lafayette, at Alyssa Sanchez International School, November 8th at 6:00 p.m. And so, very excited to have those set up and very excited to get out and meet everyone in the community. I would encourage community members to come out, and we'll be able to share a little bit about myself, some of the things that I'm learning, and give you an opportunity to provide feedback that will be important for us as we move forward as a district. Had a couple of other great meetings over the past couple of weeks. I was able to meet with John Tayer and Corinne Waldau from the Boulder Chamber to talk about workforce development on Monday. That was a very interesting conversation. I look forward to continuing our partnership with the Boulder Chamber and appreciate their support and understand, as a school district, the role that we play in workforce development for this community, and so excited to continue those conversations. I've also was able to meet with three of our advisory councils, the Teachers Advisory Council, District Accountability Committee, and Principal Advisory Council, and those were just great groups of dedicated, of people in our community that are looking to help us and provide input and make us stronger so we're serving all kids, and so I really appreciated those meetings, and so hopefully, I'll be continuing to stay busy and be out in a neighborhood near you, so hope to look forward to meeting everyone and just appreciate the opportunity to get to know this wonderful community and district.
Thank you so much, and thank you for scheduling all those meetings. It's exciting, and I would actually not like to have any tests after board meetings, or just preference. Board members, any comments, questions for Dr. Anderson? Okay, well, hearing none. Let's move on to public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two-minute starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. And there's one thing, actually, that I don't think we have in our public participation, but we do ask students to always go first, I think, whether or not they're on an agenda item, so we might want to add that, just so students are aware that they can go first and then get back to homework or other activities. So, that being said, our first speaker is on a non-agenda item, and it's Diego Cordero.
I'm afraid it'll sit down. You can actually use one. Okay. Someone say her name. I'm Diego Cordero, and I go to Crestview Elementary, and I'm a fifth grader. Okay. So what assignment were you given last week in Miss Boykov's class? Last week, I was given an assignment to be studying the 50 states of America. How did she ask you to do that? And she asked, and my teacher asked us to do it through Shepherd Software. And then, what happened when you went to Shepherd Software? And when I went to Shepherd Software, I played this game, and I saw a pop-up. Wait, what was the game? The game was the Scramble 50 States. Okay, and then what happened? I saw a pop-up ad for GTA V. So what is GTA V? An online game where the point is to carjack and to kill as many people as possible. So what did the pop-up ad look like? It showed a person in the video game shooting people. With what? With an AK-47. Okay, and then what happened when you shot people? Uh, there was lots of blood. And then, what happened to the people? They were killed. Okay, so then what did you do? Um, I clicked on the X that would give up, that would show all the options, like, block this ad, or, "I'm not interested in this ad" for whatever reasons. Okay, and so then what happened? And I clicked it, and I clicked on, "This ad was inappropriate," and it said, "We will try not to show that ad again." So then what happened? And then I played another game, and there was the very same ad. So the other game was what? 50 States game? Some other 50 states game. Okay, and you got the same pop-up ad again? Yes. Okay, that's our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peter Rue.
Greetings to the board. My name is Peter Rue. I'm a financial advisor living in Lewisville with a 20-year-old grad of the BVSD system and a present seventh grader. I welcome Mr. Anderson to your new job. Both my wife and I truly enjoyed your initial letter to the district, and we wish you a fruitful and fun year. I'm speaking today on two related topics that I know you are working on, but I urge you to redouble your efforts. They both deal with vocational workforce development and preparing our students for the world out there. The first is supporting any state initiative that would allow high school students to fulfill math, science, or foreign language requirements via a computer science credit. Other states have done this, and I have an article here about that. I saw firsthand, as my daughter in high school got caught up, you know, in the five channels, you know, science, English, history, foreign language, math, and it seems like the college requirements, you know, drives a need that all the kids and all the peer pressure requires them to take all four years, leaving little time for alternatives, even though Fairview did have some alternatives, and she did take a couple other options. But it seems like computer science, like a three- or four-year program, wasn't allowed. This was four or five years ago. And I also thank you that now my seventh grader in LMS, there is a Java class for the first time, and she's taking it, one of only a few girls, so thanks for doing that. We in Boulder have a unique ecosystem. My second topic is this, with a lot of high-tech companies that we all know about, and I would urge BVSD to tap into this resource and use them in our teachings. In July, you may have heard, the White House created a national council for the American workers. It calls upon companies to make an apprenticeship commitment and to work with schools and colleges, and Lockheed Martin's already committed 8,000, and so I would urge BVSD to get up to speed on this initiative and integrate it into the Boulder system. Thank you, and you all, I wish you a great year. Thank you for serving.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Andrea Blake. No? Okay. Our next speaker is Anna Segur.
I just wanted to follow up to my son's statement that Grand Theft Auto is rated, all the video games have rating, just like they rate movies, so Grand Theft Auto is rated mature for 17-plus, and it got that rating because it has violence, killing, strong sexual content, nudity, and profanity. So, I mean, the fact that you're getting pop-up ads for an elementary school classroom when they're assigned to do an educational website is pretty shocking to me. The second comment I wanted to make was, Mr. Moore stated a couple weeks ago that they had this scaffolding approach to communications by grade, so what students were allowed to do in terms of who they could communicate with and how was structured by grade. So I sent all of you, through my son's BVSD account, a link to a Google document. So this shows that any student can, using their Google Docs that this BVSD provides them, can communicate with anybody. So, none of you guys were on an approved list of people that my son can communicate, and now you can all have access to this document that you can write back and forth in the Google document and communicate anything you want, and I, as a parent, wouldn't have known about it, and I don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yael Cohen.
Hi, I'm Yael Cohen, and I'm a special education advocate for about 30 years, all over Colorado and the country, but Boulder, I care about a whole lot because I grew, I raised my kids here, they went to Boulder Valley Schools, and I live in the community and continue to. So you probably remember those two girls who showed up two weeks ago to talk about bullying, the little sister who was worried about her big sister, and I'm here in place of her mom, who couldn't be here because there was another incident, two incidents this afternoon, and she cannot leave the kids to be able to come, so I've come in her place. You had asked that Dr. Anderson update you, but I don't know how much information you've gotten, and we've very nicely left you off the frequent email chain, that there are other people working, obviously, with us. Last week, there was, before the child returned to school, there were six and a half hours of IEP meetings and safety plan meetings. Day one back was a disaster, and the school said they didn't know, but the bully found her way somehow into a door, lay in wait for the student. Fortunately, there was a staff member with the student, and so she didn't get to do anything. There was another incident, too. Administration was told, no one called the parents, and that was part of the plan. No one called, and when we pressed them the next day, the administration told us they were too busy. We're not able to know because of what happened, because eventually, they did, were able to confirm what happened. A staff member saw it, there were cameras. We surmised that there was a consequence at the end of last week. It didn't work so well. The bullying and the targeting started again yesterday morning. Yesterday, there was staff who was ostensibly watching. They should have been able to see and hear. If they knew, they didn't report. We've asked for an emergency meeting, and again, we were told this morning, they are too busy to do it. We were also given an email lecture on the policy. I'm finishing, I just have a moment here, that there was an email, we were given an email on policy and told they are following district policy this afternoon. There were two more incidents. We are hoping one of them was caught on video, but I'm here to say, this isn't working, and I want to know. I've been in this district a long time and a special ed advocate here, too, and I want to know what you have to do to get an emergency meeting when the principal said to all of the eighth graders last week that safety is their number-one priority, she told the kids. So I want to know what you have to do to get an emergency meeting about safety, now of two children, not just one. Thank you.
That concludes public participation, and now we'll move on to board communication. So, board members, who would like to begin? I'll start. I'll just thank people for coming and speaking with us, and if you do run over the time limit, you can always send an email with more information also. That's another way to communicate with the board, so that...
We've got our email, change your line, but I don't think you wrote it either.
Okay. So thanks so much for coming tonight. Any other comments, board members? Donna?
Thank you, Diego, for your comments. I'm sorry you had to have experienced what you did. Peter, on NPR Today, it resonated with something that you said, I have your name right, correct? I was very interested to find out how companies are getting together and using apprenticeships to earn college credit, and many times, graduates, seniors in high school are able to graduate already with an associate's degree, so it was a really interesting program to listen to, and I know that our transition program, I went to a presentation in May of this last year, and Ball Aerospace did hire some apprentice, which ended up, they employed them full-time. So I think there's so much opportunity for our kids to do the apprenticeships within our community, so thank you for bringing that to us, and thank you, Yael, for your comments and making us aware.
Other comments? Richard?
Thanks, Tina. Diego, that's very brave to come up here and get in front of us and tell us your story at what happened with you and your assignment that you had, and how you ended up, wherever you ended up in that particular Google site. Thank you very much. We heard, yeah, two weeks ago from those two young ladies that were here, and I think it was Aspen Creek, correct? If I'm not mistaken? And we were going to get some follow-up on that. Have we gotten any, anything on that situation at all?
We'll provide the board an update.
Thanks.
Board members? Shelley, Sam, Kathy? Kathy?
Yeah, I just want to thank the public for coming and sharing stories with us, and to your comments about CTE, I'm a huge proponent of doing more. I think we live in an environment that's incredibly rich with opportunities that I don't think we've taken full advantage of, and I'm hoping that as we implement our new graduation guidelines, that we'll be able, through capstones and other certificates and things, to be able to provide our students some alternate pathways, I think similar to what you've said, because I think we're seeing that there's some great opportunities that maybe a traditional pathway through high school isn't giving our students, so thank you for coming and sharing that.
Yes, thank you to everyone for coming tonight. I just have a quick question, Rob, if you would mind following up on Diego's situation. So I know we've made some adjustments to gaming in the elementary schools. I thought we had anyway, so I'd just be curious to know how something like this can happen if we've made those adjustments. Thanks.
So we'll move on to our action items, and I'm going to read the list of items, unless anyone needs a break. Is everyone doing okay? Has it been long? Okay. All right, so, this is our consent grouping. 6.1 Personnel Item, 6.2 Approval of Minutes, August 28th, 2018, Special Meeting. 6.3 Approval of Minutes, August 28th, 2018, Regular Meeting. 6.4 Acceptance of Donation, Flatirons Elementary. 6.5 Approval of Resolution, 1831 Summit Charter Contract Negotiation Extension. 6.6 Chromebook Proposal, Students. 6.7 Grant, Boulder High School, Adelante de la Universidad, Regional Collaboration for Human Services Funding, City and County of Boulder, 18. Okay, so are there any items that board members would like to pull from the consent grouping?
I don't know if I want to pull. I have to ask a question first, so...
Want to do it that way? Okay. Okay, so should we make a move?
Technically, I don't think I can do it that way.
Yeah, I don't think you can. So should we make a motion to approve and then?
Discuss.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can someone make a motion? Kathy, can someone second?
But wait, what if I vote then, approve?
Well, that's what I'm, should we ask for guidance?
Yes.
Can she ask a question before she decides to pull? Okay.
Thank you. Now?
I think so.
Okay, so my question's about the Chromebook one. So are these Chromebooks meant to replace existing Chromebooks, or are they meant to expand the One-to-Web program to all the middle schools, like I read in the newspaper about?
So I'll ask Andrew to come up to give the details on the specifics of the RFP, but I think the answer is both.
Yes, Board, Board of Education, Dr. Anderson, the answer is both. We do have a standing contract for purchasing all of our devices. In August, you approved the contract for administrative devices. This is the same contract, just for student devices, and we went out to RFPs, there was competitive bidding, and what this contract does is give us a fixed price for the next year. There are no requirements that we have to buy so many, it just becomes the new contract with actually a new company to get our student Chromebooks.
Okay, so if we approve this, we're just approving this contractor to supply Chromebooks at this price?
That is correct.
We're not making a decision about anything else relating to Chromebooks?
No, and I should say that typically, decisions to buy the devices don't come to the board once the contract is in place. In other words, we've been doing tech refresh for a decade and a half.
No, I understand a refresh wouldn't come to the board, but I just don't recall where the board ever agreed to roll out the One-to-Web program to all middle schools, unless we somehow implicitly did that by approving some budget amount that contained enough money to do that.
Yeah, it was, it was the first meeting in March of 2017. It was the One-to-Web program that was approved. It was restricted, though, your approval was for fifth through 12th grade only, and so that was, that's in the minutes that that was approved, March 2017.
Okay, but I don't, I don't recall us ever saying that, even though we may have approved that, because we already had some middle schools that had them at that point.
Not under the One-to-Web program. So the first middle schools under the One-to-Web program went last year, and they were the feeder systems into Centaurus and Broomfield, which had already gone at the high school level, One-to-Web. So last year, Angivine, Broomfield Heights Middle School, Aspen Creek, they went. This year, all other principals have opted in at the middle school level to go One-to-Web. We are right now delivering professional development, so in the first year of One-to-Web, there are no Chromebooks deployed until January, so right now, the teachers in those middle schools are getting professional development on how to teach with the technology going home.
Okay, well, we've discussed at length how there may not be the supports in place that we need to support these, all these Chromebooks in the middle schools. There's still issues about gaming, there's still issues about social media, there's still issues about screen time, so I know you plan on addressing those in this technology discussion that's going on, so I'm fine with approving this contract for this vendor, but I really hope we're going to have a discussion before we roll these out to all the middle schools without the supports in place that we need. So when would that discussion happen?
Right now, I believe that we have a board work session scheduled, I believe, Laura, is that in?
That is in early November.
Early November?
And would this be on the agenda for that?
Well, I think this is definitely part of the discussion as we think about our technology vision as a district.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so then, any items to be pulled? Okay, hearing none. Could we get a motion to approve? Kathy, I'm seconded by Richard. Okay, and so now, any questions on other items or that item? Okay, hearing none. Laura, do you want to call the roll on the consent grouping?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant is not present, motion passes.
Okay, and then we'll move on to our one action item this evening, which is 7.1, the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority Consent for School District Representative. Do we have a motion to approve? Richard, second. Sam? Okay, any questions or discussion, board members?
Yeah, I think, is it a separate question to appoint our liaison? Right now, we're just approving...
Yes. Yeah, when do we appoint the liaison?
I think it would be appropriate to make the question include a person.
Okay, so in this, so right now, we can say that now? Okay.
And I was going to nominate Kathy as the liaison to this body.
Okay. Can I second that? Is that a, is that a motion, or is that a?
I guess we're, since the motion was already made, we need to have a new motion.
Okay, sorry.
Or withdraw the motion and make a new motion.
Okay, thanks.
And I guess I would offer a new motion, that we consent to having a liaison to the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority, and that the board's liaison be Kathy Gebhardt.
Approving the resolution and designating Kathy Gebhardt as the liaison.
Is that a proper motion?
Okay, I'll second that motion to approve the resolution and appoint Kathy as the liaison. All right. Any discussion or questions?
Question? I'm not opposed to having Kathy do it or doing it at all, but does it make sense to have Kitty, since she's from Broomfield?
I talked with Kitty today, and she doesn't have the bandwidth to do it, so she said I could say at the board table, because I thought the same thing, Shelley.
Okay, that's fine.
And you should know that I think this is really only for a year, because it's through the term of Laura Mitchell's term, and she's up in 2019, so it's, it's a pretty short term, and we can't attend the meetings, because they, they meet the same night as we do in Broomfield, and Laura's meetings, Adam's board meetings aren't on Tuesday. Does that help, Shelley?
Yeah. Okay. All right, with that, any other discussion, questions? Okay, Laura, do you want to call the roll on that motion?
The motion is to approve the resolution and appoint Kathy Gebhardt as the liaison. Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant is not present, motion passes.
Okay, and so we have our last item, is that right? Which is a study item, it's agenda setting. So this is one of the ways that we're talking about introducing topics for our priority, quarterly priority planning, and also just to give us a heads-up on what's coming down the pike. And so if you suggest something, Laura will take a note of it and append it to the list, and then it will come back through on the quarterly priority planning session. Is that right? Yeah, I think that's right.
Unless we want to do it before that, right?
Correct. Well, we can also do, you know, I think that you can, through the motion process, actually, you can put an agenda item onto an agenda, I believe.
And don't we already have some things in the queue?
We have a lot of things in the queue. We have an incredibly long list. Yep.
Yeah, so what we're doing is prioritizing.
Well, some of these have meeting dates, so some of these are already, you'll notice the dates, that, so we've put these, a lot of the discussions we've talked about in the 10 priorities from the last year have already been scheduled into meetings and discussions, and they're pretty significant topics, and that's all I'll say about that. So, board members?
It's a good list.
It's a good, it is a good list. Shelley?
I would, I want, I would like to put something on agenda setting, and I don't think you can wait till the quarterly planning session. So should I make a motion to do that, or what should I do?
So, well, why don't we talk about it?
Okay. I would like to discuss the potential for rotating the voting order on this board. So that each time we vote, we move down one person in the alphabet first. So I can either make a motion to do that now, or we can make a motion to put it on a future agenda, or how does, what's the process?
That might be covered in the state law. Give me an opportunity to research that. I think it's alphabetical, any kind of roll call.
Okay, well, I know of other boards that do it this rotating way. I just don't know of any other school boards do it that way. So that would be helpful to know.
So can we start there?
Yep, absolutely.
With Melissa researching it, and then we can talk about it. Yeah, neat.
Should I call you Zenford then? Sorry. I said, should I call you Zenford, and then you could start at the end? It was a bad joke. No, I was just, no, it's an interesting idea. I was just curious what your thinking was behind it, because I hadn't even really thought about it.
I just think it would be fair to have people, some people not have to vote first or last, you know, first and lead the discussion, or last and never really have the ability to, you know, affect the vote. So I just think it would be more equitable.
Okay, other items. Richard?
When is the equity policy and allocation of resources to schools coming up? I don't see a date on there.
And is this, is that tied?
If I'm reading this correctly, I'm looking at the draft updating 9/7/18. It's on the Agenda City.
So we're giving the Board an update on the Equity Strategic Plan, which would also encompass the conversations that we have at the Equity Summit, and that's coming on the 23rd. In regards to allocation of resources to schools through equity, I would say that that would be covered through the budget processes. That's going to be coming on September 25th.
Can I add also, Richard, just the other day, I happened to be reviewing the Memorandum of Understanding with BVEA, and I think that they're doing, they have a study group that's looking at the allocation of resources based on weighted factors, and I think that's February. Is that, or January? Do you remember? We brought that up at DAC last week, the...
I know they're working on it. I'll get back to the Board when that's coming back, so you all will be informed.
Yeah, because that'll be.
But I do know they're working on that.
A separate report. I don't know how that's coming to us yet, but that was in the MOU for the, with the contract negotiations last year. That's helpful. Other ideas, thoughts? Okay, Madonna?
No, I think I understand. I was, excuse me. There. I was going to talk about whether we move things around, but I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, Kathy?
I think we can update it. We can take off resolution for Casby, the Amendment 73 piece. It's nice to check something off.
One down. Okay. Okay, well, with that, if I may, I'd like to conclude our meeting for this evening. Thank you all.